Call meeting slash work session today. As you all know, last week, the city council approved their budget. We're still awaiting to see what the state's going to do regarding its budget. But nevertheless, we called this meeting so that we can continue our discussion and hopefully vote today on a budget so that the administration can do the things that are necessary to get contracts out and all the things that we know are required as part of our budget process. So what we're going to do really for this open part of the meeting is provide Dr. Boone an opportunity to update the board on the actions of council, some recommendations that she has for us to consider. Then we'll have a discussion and hopefully work towards arriving at a final budget for 2018, 2019. Then after that, we'll go into closed session and just deal with some legal matters and some other matters, and then we will call it a day. And just as a reminder, on June 6th, for our work session, we're scheduled to start at 2:00 PM, where we'll be also going in depth with the superintendent's evaluation. So with that, Dr. Boone.
Good afternoon. Gentlemen, let me first thank Pearl To.
For being here today. Ms. Ingram is at another location, so that was already scheduled before we could map all of this out and the city adopted. What we have provided to the board is an analysis and update of the city council's actions on its budget and the subsequent impact on the request that the school board made. Essentially, the board asked for nearly $6.2 million, just shy of $6.2 million in additional revenue. The city manager's budget presented, recommended $5 million in new operating funds, and that is what council ultimately approved. All of the increases within the various line items, and I'll let Ms. To take us through particular items of that, but all of the information, the items included, of course, were predicated on the 10 cent tax increase in the city. So that approval is what led to these funds. Obviously, there is also in that recommendation that the city manager made to the city council references to the revenue sharing agreement. And certainly, we're prepared to talk a little bit about what were some of the assumptions and things that went into that final piece. I do have to say that the process did not play out as it was said to council and the school board that would happen and that a resolution would come back to the board and council in February for approval. The resolution came at the same time the budget was being presented to council. And so what we do know is that we do see movement from the 28 and a half percent original, what was considered starting point, which almost became the permanent point, in the city manager's recommendation. Ms. Ingram and Ms. To worked many hours with the city's budget team in terms of recommendations, requests, suggestions, all of the above. And so we ran several scenarios, and unfortunately, one of those scenarios is where it came out that we were asking for $12 million in new money. That wasn't what we were doing. We were running scenarios as it related to the various revenue options that were supported, that could be considered. Ms. Ingram and Ms. To also worked with an outside consultant to help us think through this process because it was a new event, new activity for us, and we wanted to make sure that we were certainly considering all aspects and putting the district in the best place possible. So we can also address that in a couple of moments. In the end, what this budget allows us to do, based on the recommendations that I've made to the board, is to continue with Phase 2 of the pay and comp study, which includes an average 3.3% increase for teachers and classified and support personnel, 3.2% average increase for administrative personnel. It also, in the recommendations that I've made to the board, allows us to move forward with mixed income, mixed income pre-K classes, and to develop a process for moving toward implementation of those. It also would preserve some funding for difficult-to-staff schools. And again, we would look at where we are with staffing and look at a whole lot of models around that. And those teaching positions, as it relates to behavioral intervention personnel, again, and you will recall from the special education annual plan representation and the required set aside for, due to the high percentage of numbers of students with disabilities who are African-American and high level of suspensions, it allows us to continue that big umbrella of what we're trying to accomplish as it relates to alternative services and discipline and addressing all of that. And so these are the pieces that allows us to preserve. And, you know, certainly, when you look at ways in which we've gotten to this balancing strategy, there were a couple of things that happened since we presented the budget to the school board and the school board adopted and sent it to council that have helped us. One deals with the actual health insurance rates having been finalized. So that created savings for us based on where our employees currently select within the various policies.
Could you repeat that, please?
Health insurance rates were finalized by the consortium.
Were finalized, okay.
By the consortium.
Okay.
And as a result of those rates being finalized and the, looking at the data, the analysis of where our Norfolk Public Schools employees select within those policies, it gives us a chance to save some money. The 2% increase, though, is still there. That's the employer, employee extra cost, increased cost. But as we, you recall, at South Side STEM at Campestella, we did, went through the exercise of what actually that means in dollars. For some, it could be as little as 53 cents. For others, it could be $10, $12 per pay period difference, depending on the plan that they've selected. So it does not therefore eat up any of the potential increases because those increases are based on the health insurance costs, not the salaries. The other piece that allowed us to recognize some savings, so almost a million dollars of the 1.2, nearly 1.2 that we had to address, were accomplished through health insurance. And then the other piece dealt with the change in the retirement rate for political subdivisions for VRS. You'll recall, last year, we had this push with the state that they were dying to increase the rates, and we said, "Well, why are you accelerating a year in advance? Let's just stay on the same course." So they accelerated, and then they bumped back this year. So we took the hit in the budget last year. We're getting some benefit in the budget this year. So that was roughly $300,000. What this current, but these recommendations don't support is a health and wellness coordinator and the GPS for school buses. But let me talk about potential opportunities for both. As we're now into June, I mean, I know it's May 30th, but it was June at the 15th of the month, as far as we do for planning, we may be able to identify enough funds to pre-fund or at least carry over to use for GPS on buses. So that may be an opportunity that we would have, yes.
When we do that carryover, do we have to ask the city permission for that?
If we carry over, we have to ask for, if we encumbered in this fiscal year, we don't have to ask for reappropriation.
Okay.
The other opportunity deals with the state. One of the, and, you know, there's, because of the way in which the process is playing out now with the legislature, there are a couple of different proposals that are being vetted. We haven't seen the details of any of those proposals and the calculation sheet, I was going to say the cherry sheet, I was back in Worcester, back in Massachusetts, the calculation sheet that will let us know what was, what would be there. There was one version that would allow us to gain almost $800,000 in additional funds for the district. Should that happen, that would give us revenue that would allow us then to restore the health and, potentially restore the health and wellness coordinator. Today, both of those are known, but I did want to at least say to the board, we've not ignored those. We haven't just said, "Nope, can't fund it, done," but have also started looking at ways that we could potentially restore those over a couple of opportunities. I was with superintendent's today at the CSEP and the governor's school budget, so we were constantly checking to see if anybody had gotten a message about a state budget because, as what you know about the governor's school and CSEP, they both are highly dependent on state funds. So it's been an interesting time around the state budget. But Ms. Ingram and I have also had the realistic conversation about what would we begin to think about should the state not have a budget by July 1? And what does that mean for ramping down for us and the things that we would have to cover, what we could cover and what we couldn't? I'm very hopeful, particularly based on some actions and things that occurred yesterday in the legislature, that we will have a budget by June 30th. But in the event not, then we would come to the board, we would request from the board a meeting and discuss what would be some options for us absent those state funds.
Is that Commonwealth-wide?
Yes.
Will every school division have to go through those machinations?
Yes. And for us, about two-thirds of our budget is state-funded.
Okay.
And so depending upon how much state funding you receive, the greater the impact. Obviously, some of the districts, particularly Northern Virginia, would be in a different place, but you will be, I will remind you that all of our standards of quality, SOQ-funded positions, would be impacted by not having those state dollars. So again, I'm not, I think you all know me well enough, I don't throw in trial balloons and paint doom and gloom, but I am going to be honest enough that that's something that Ms. Ingram, Ms. To and I are paying close attention to and thinking about, you know, what we would have to do if we don't have a budget. Doesn't mean we were shut down on July 1st, but it just means some things would be slowed and impacted and all those things. Because then, also think about all of our grants that are handled by the state, anything that's a state grant. Well, if the state is closed, you don't have anybody analyzing and approving those various grants and et cetera. So the snowball impact of a state not having a budget is tremendous. And I'm a little more optimistic than I have been that we will have a budget and I think we will be okay. The question is, will we have one today or will it take another week or two? I don't know. But the longer it goes, the deeper we go into our planning of what it will happen, should we not have an approved state budget soon. Let me, in case you may have had questions about adding occupational therapists and reducing contract services, thanks to special education and aggressive recruitment by our HR department, we've actually been able to offer contracts, NPS contracts, to occupational therapists. So that allows us to offset, it's a budget-neutral piece, but it will show the reduction in contract services and then move those into two positions that we have been able to hire. So that's the good news on that, you know, when we have our own staff. So I'll stop there. Ms. To, have I missed anything?
No, I think you pretty much covered it.
Okay, so now, I talked the big picture, the details. Ms. To is here to help us with if you have questions on those.
Right. So you have questions, okay.
Well, are you all finished? Because I also want to just kind of, at what point would you walk us through a little more the
Revenue sharing.
The resolution?
Right. So let's, can we talk about these recommendations and then we can talk about, because revenue sharing is about the future. So if we can do this piece, again, not move into the vote yet, but if we can have discussions around the recommendations for balancing, and then we can go into the resolution piece.
Right. Like Dr. Boone said, the city council approved giving the schools $5 million increase in school funding by making the $3 million of one-time fund permanent that was given to us, an 18 plus an additional $2 million. So that leaves Norfolk Public Schools a gap of 1.2 million, and Dr. Boone has mentioned what those recommendations to meet the gap. So with that, that will bring the total operating budget for 2019 to 328,355,950. There was a question about the change in the health insurance premium rate. The rate included in the school board proposed budget included a 2% across-the-board increase, which resulted in $800,000, which we reported to you in March. When the consortium approved it in April, there has been a change in some, some went up, some went down, and majority of our employees participated in the employee-only and employee-plus-family, so a rate reduction ranging from 1.7 to 6.3. That's how we were able to realize a $600,000 saving. That's it. Any other questions?
Ms. Doyle?
What about the CIP from the city?
They gave us an additional $6 million for 2019.
Yeah, I had that too. So if we can focus on the operation
Okay.
And then we can come back and talk about the CIP, please.
Well, but in the reductions and balancing strategies, there is an $84,000 increase in the debt service that's related to, do you want to talk?
Yeah. When the city increased the revenue for the debt service, we typically just increased the expenditure side because it's just a wash. That's all it is.
Talk about capital.
Yeah, let's come back in.
Okay.
Dr. Gabriel?
So Dr. Boone, already within the budget are the guidance counselors for the schools, and then the guidance counselors?
That was not, so go back, so we don't confuse issues.
Right.
There was never a, yes, we fixed the guidance counselor piece. It was about how we align. We did not add counselors. We didn't reduce counselors.
Right.
That was not the proposal.
And then the grant writer position, is that a full-time position within the budget now, or are we, where are we with that?
It's, I believe, still halftime, but again, some of this gets to those state dollars that we could potentially use.
Okay, all right. And for the compensation study, the phasing in of that, with the ongoing monies that we're going to be getting from the city, are we going to plan to continue to phase that in as the, as the sharing of revenues occurs with the city? Is that what the goal is?
The goal in these first two years has been to realign the salary tables and schedules, to eliminate the compression that was happening, you know, particularly years 1 through 9, and also to look at the values of the steps, the values between the steps, and then to look at the overall alignment and what's competitive salaries. So we've been able to do most of that in the first two years. Going forward, of course, our goal is not to freeze steps and to be able to continue to move, make, for our employees with successful evaluations, to have progression along steps going forward. The $5 million in new operating funds are considered our new base, and so those are permanent funds. The resolution addresses what would be additional funds. And so I guess the, and I'm not trying to be funny, I'm not trying to spot the city manager, we have a good relationship. The lingering question for me is, if there's a 10 cent tax increase, what portion, the 2.7 cents that's dedicated to schools, does that equal the $5 million annually that would go forward? I just haven't seen the breakdown.
That's the understanding I have.
Right. But I just want to be sure. See, understandings, I have the same understanding. Understanding and evidence for me are two different things. And I haven't necessarily seen, to make sure, I mean, the $5 million is the verbal and the written commitment, but I want to make sure we don't get short shrift on the 2.7 cents of the tax increase that the citizens very eloquently spoke about at the public hearing and saying, "Hey, we weren't here to support tax increase, but when we hear what's going on with the schools, we support it for the schools." So I just want to make sure we continue to get that full 2.7 cents of that.
Because our base with putting the employees on the proper step or trying to get to that, our base is going to rise naturally because of that, and we're going to need to carry those funds continuously.
And that's why it was important, whether there was a revenue sharing agreement or not, the heavy lifting we've done in these first two years was critical to be able to get the scales aligned. So you remember from last year, we went from a 26-step scale to a 30-step scale. This year's proposed, and that's what we implemented for this year, and we, and did away with step one representing years 1 through 4. So we've done that, that work. This year, for what we've asked the board to support, is the work that allows us to do what we call some cleanup work around the value of the scale. Because long-term, we have to have a scale that we can afford also. So we're looking not only what it looks like for today, but what does it look like in the scale going forward? And so that's where we looked at the value between the steps. The value is still a little bit lower in the first four or five years in terms of the space between the steps, and that was done intentionally also to recognize those employees who have stayed with us and is part of a retention tool. So we raised the beginning teacher salary, which impacted all of the scale, but we also then put more money between steps in years 10 and above than we have in those earlier years, simply because folks who decide to stay with Norfolk Public Schools should also reap a benefit. So we weren't trying to reintroduce new compression. So you're right. So what's the value of our comp? And, you know, we talk about the revenue sharing. So the $5 million is our, it becomes part of that 128, 129 new, 128 base?
122, 97.
122 is the new base. And so what does that look like going forward? We'll be paying close attention to what the revenue looks like and the fact of what else can we accomplish. Our goal moving forward, though, is not to move back into a place of freezing steps. Now, the question will be, you know, based on revenue, will be steps plus something or would it be steps only? We don't know that yet because that's driven by revenue, and we don't, we don't know what that's going to look like from the state or the locality, because the revenue sharing piece is based on that information. Let me at least pass around to you so everyone can have a copy of the resolution that went to council when we get to that point. Just while I'm saying that, I don't want to forget that I have those there.
So Dr. Boone, I recall that when we did the pay and comp study, the recommendation is that it was going to be a four-year rollout. We're in year two. So that there would be two more years of funding that would help people still get on the right step, scale, and be paid appropriately.
Well, so, so, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm apologize.
No, that's okay. So the question is, why do we, we're ending it at two years?
No, I didn't say we were ending. I said, the definition of what the next two years look like will be driven by revenue. We think we've done some of the heavy lifting. Part of what we've had to go back and look at is something I shared with the board last year. Getting people to the right step is a formula that we can accomplish. You think about somebody who's been here 30 years, and let's say they worked in another school district for two years. We only have visibility of what step they were brought in on, and so all of that, you would have to touch every five, each of the 5,000 employees. And then because of the way in which records are kept, some folks think that, "Well, I have this number of years in VRS." But the business model when you were hired in Norfolk said you got credit for this number of steps, and they may not match. And so that's such a tough educational piece, that your total years of VRS service, service years will more than likely not match your years of service in any district. And so they are not a one-for-one comparison. And so going through this entire process, and believe me, Keith Bailey, Pearl To, Rhonda Ingram, Tim Phillips and I have spent hours and now a couple of years looking at that. And so our goal was, has been to move the scale forward, create, eliminate that compression at 1 through 9, and these artificial standards of whether or not folks could move along steps. And so now what we're beginning to look at is then, what would be the number of steps we could progress to do some advancement, but not necessarily get folks on the right step, because we realize defining the right step means different things for each one of our employees.
We had estimated at the time it was going to be 20 to 24 million dollars to do the four-year rollout. Are you still within that?
We, and I look at Pearl, because yes, somewhat there. If you think about it, we put about $4 million in for this current year.
Right.
Four, five?
About seven. I have to go back.
Last year. It wasn't quite seven.
Last year.
For last, for the current fiscal year. And then we're looking at it's about 4.2, almost 5, for this year.
Okay.
So that puts us at about nine or 10 of that 24.
Right.
The question then remains, what's realistic now, given the council having adopted this resolution, and what we see in what is projected to be in the states by aeneum? You'll recall, the state has zero money in FY19 for any salaries. And they have what I consider to be a pay-to-play model, not trying to be disparaging, but that's the only way I know to describe it, and they did it last year. There is one scenario at the legislature that would have a 3% increase in the second year of the biennium. It hasn't been, I haven't seen at least, whether that's mid-year or full year. But it says you have to have already done at least 3% over these two fiscal years in the biennium in order to be able to access the state's portion of 3% for SOQ-funded positions. So for me, that's pay-to-play. And let's say you're in a community where you haven't been able to get 3% increase over two, two years of a biennium. That's just not fair. You know, they did some of that last year, which allowed us to take advantage of the money because we had done the 2%, the average 2% last year, so that allowed us to take advantage of those state funds. But, yeah, like I said, I'm very concerned that that's becoming a model now that localities have to put up money upfront in order to be able to access state monies. It's different if it's a state grant and you have to have the local composite piece, but now it seems that they're putting up a local tax, if you will, on districts in order to access certain state funds around SOQ-funded positions for increases. I think that's something we want to pay close attention to and perhaps raise in our legislative conversation and package this fall, because that's a real undue burden on some communities. Fortunately, because of all we were doing this year, we're going to be okay and would be able to access those funds and help offset. But remember, we've done the pay and comp now with basically no state money. So we, the local dollars have taken up both the state increases and the locally, for SOQ positions, and the local increases. So that's why I'm trying not to cast dispersion on the city because I'm very appreciative of where we're going, but the state is also passing down some things that make it challenging for localities.
My last question on pay and comp was, the other aim was that within these four years, we wanted to make sure that people who taught at X level weren't leaving the division and getting paid $6,000 more to another local division at that same level. And so is that still going to be happening?
Yes. And what we worked on to begin to address that is that we've always had a lowercase p, an internal practice, that was defined, if you were hired in the district, what, how many years of service would we give, credit would we give you for years in other places? Whether there were areas, particularly for our classified and support personnel, that they have experience in relevant areas before coming to education? And then where would we, how much credit would we give them for that and determine where they were placed on the scale? Similarly, for teachers, you know, how many years of experience and how, what level we bring them in. So we worked where we think we've defined, because we actually had some folks who would leave the district and then come back because they knew they would get on a different place.
Well, and they were leaving us, though, because they were getting more for being in the same place.
Right, but then they were coming back. They would get more coming back here because they'd get on a different step based on where they came from.
Right.
So what we've tried to do, we have now defined So what we've tried to do, we have now defined how many years of credit you will get, depending upon how many years of credit you approach the district with. For example, sometimes we have been given one-for-one credit for folks who were coming new to the district, which would put them way ahead of some of our employees. What we've done is looked at a model in some places, depending upon the years of service, and I don't have that before me, you might get one year for every two years of credit somewhere else. So it wouldn't put you to the top of the list, but it would give you some credit. And again, this doesn't do anything for your VRS credible service. That remains, but it just has to do with where you would be placed on the salary schedule here. So we, we really worked at now for our 30-step scale, because we didn't have, we, we had to do that once we moved from 26 to 30. And so that's what we're putting in place for next year and to see. In terms of the, the, the other part of your question, Ms. Doyle, there will still be some instances where folks will be able to leave and make more money. There will still be instances where people can leave where they are and come here and make more money. And so now it's just a matter of what are the other issues that, that a person would deal with, um, as, as we think through this. We, our average 3.3 raise, um, is probably the top in this region for, for our South Side now.
It's healthy. It absolutely is.
Yeah. Uh, the average of 3.3, not exact. I don't know how you quantify Suffolk's. Everybody got, all teachers get $3,000, and I think everybody else got one and a half or two, something like that. Um, I think Chesapeake is three even. And, um, so you, you know, it varies. What we don't know with those numbers is, have they done anything else to their skills that would make it more attractive to someone else? We certainly think we've narrowed those gaps. Part of that challenge gets to steps that people think they should have been on. I, you know, like I said, undoing all of those years with no step increases, we couldn't, we couldn't afford to move people six or more steps to do it. There's no way our, our budget could, could absorb that, even with a lot of new money. It would just, it's a budget buster. And so our goal is to move people. Adjusting the scale allowed us to move people up, and then adjusting the step that they were on on the scale gave folks double bumps. So some got that last year, and some, most would get that this year going forward.
Thank you. I know I interrupted you. Were you finished?
No, actually, the last one that you asked was what I was gonna ask. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
You guys done?
Yep.
Thank you.
Want to make sure. Uh, you answered one of the questions. It's 30 steps that we're, we're.
Yes, we went from 26 to 30.
I, you, you brought up another issue as far as we're offering, in some cases, uh, and I guess you haven't, uh, just to make sure I'm clear, you haven't come down perfectly on this, but for one year for every two years of service?
The reason I'm saying that, it depends on where a person was in their career. So in the early years, it might have been two for one, I mean, one year for two. In the middle years, it could be something else, and in the upper years, it might have been more. So that's what I'm saying. I, I don't have that before me.
Now, are the other, do we have knowledge of if what the other districts are doing as far as what they're offering?
I don't.
As far, as far as, uh, years of service versus?
Usually we, that's the one, I already let out too much trade secret publicly today.
Okay.
Um, but that's usually one that folks keep.
And the, and the la, my last question is, um, uh, have we ever received information on where our faculty, well, I guess wherever employees, as far as the number of years of service they are, as far as?
With NPS?
NPS.
We have that.
I, I don't recall, I remember, I thought I remember seeing it. Um, if you could find it for me, I would really like to, to look at that, just because that can help predict, um, what your future costs are going to be.
Right. And, and that's part of what we use in terms of where our folks are. We had a large chunk of, of employees, large number of employees that were in that one-to-five-year window, and a lot in that one-to-15 window.
And, and?
Then, but then we have a lot that are 25-plus.
The, the point I was making, because in previous boards, the first two years I was on the board, we offered incentives for people to retire, and they took early retirement, and that lowered our average years of service. And that's why we came out lower in average salary for our employees, because we were losing people at the top end to help pay for people at the, at the beginning part of the steps.
And we've taken a diff, a slightly different approach. We feel that there's, we have to remain competitive when we bring folks in, but we also need to validate those who stay with us. And so that's why the, the distance between, and even though we had great starting salaries, we had competitive starting salaries, a lot of people didn't realize, when you accepted that starting salary with us, that's where you were for four years. You had no growth potential. And so we front-loaded all of that. And what we tried to do is put some on the front, and, and then more toward the middle and the latter part, so that people can recognize, um, growth within that.
It's really, it's really a tough, this is a comment, being a former teacher, this is really tough, because we're definitely not paying our teachers what they, what they deserve. We're paying them what we can, and we try to move them up every year. I mean, a 2% raise every year for the last seven, a minimum 2% for the last seven years isn't bad. I know a lot of places in the public sector, that hasn't happened.
Right, right.
But we're still underpaying our, we underpay all the primary, uh, people in our, in our society, anyway.
Well, and the interesting thing we did with those 2% increases is good and bad. Because instead of applying 2% to a base for whatever the scale was for that year, we effectively added 2% to the scale. So where it looked like people didn't, you know, the mindset was that, well, we didn't get anything for these years. No, you may not moved on a step, but the value of the scale changed. Truthfully, what we should have done is stayed at the same place and added 2%. But that, I understand why it was done. Mathematically, it, it's, it's the correct way to, if this, if your base is 44,000, you get 2% this year, but we didn't change the scale. And so you still get 2% the next year on the same 44. That doesn't grow, and it doesn't give the, the piece. But when we started looking at the value of our salary schedule, every time a 2% was given, we changed the entire salary scale. So it did, the scale grew during the same time that overall compensation didn't grow that much.
I, I think this is, uh, important discussion, because I know it's the hardest thing to try to explain. I have the, uh, the presentation from the pay and comp study. So, um, you know, in 2016, when we received the study, uh, it said clearly, 73% of teachers
Mm-hmm.
uh, are in a pay step lower than expected based upon their years, years of service. And then it also noted that, uh, 64% of teachers are in the first nine steps of the pay scale.
Mm-hmm.
And so what the board has been doing, and, you know, under Dr. Boone's leadership, is really biting that bullet and doing this phase in, so that we truly are competitive, not only in the things that we've talked about, starting pay and average pay and so forth, but really getting that structural piece straight, so that as you see these increases in the value, and especially for, um, um, longer-term members of the division who are courting that compression, that this is that effort to try to make sure that we don't have that scenario, Ms. Doyle, that you talked about, but really to get things straight. And if we had the 28, 25 million dollars, we could have done it all in one year. I'm sure we may have tried it, even though we know sometimes that can be hard, trying to
Mm-hmm.
bite off too much. But this ongoing conversation around this, uh, phase in with this pay and comp study, I just think is extremely important, and we can't lose sight of it, as others are having different discussions around average raises. We're trying to make sure that we get our infrastructure in place, in addition to trying to make sure that the salary increases or average raises or whatever comes out of the state is, is, is appropriate.
You, you know, I, the legislature's got to figure this out sooner than later. Um, because again, they, they, they are putting us in really, they are putting communities in really tough predicaments, given the fact that, again, this is, this is my third budget to the board, and this is the third budget that didn't have any money in it from the state for, for teacher increases, for salary increases, for SOQ-funded positions. Because we were promised in each of the last two years, and it didn't happen.
All right. Anything additional on that portion of, uh, the recommendations we had before us? Uh, Dr. Boone, you did mention the opportunity to, um, perhaps do some things with, uh, uh, GPS, um, on buses. We also were working at one time, uh, having Wi-Fi installed on buses. Do you know where we are with that? Is that something that we are progressing, or can we get back, get back later? Or give us?
I can certainly look into it, but I'll be honest, that hadn't been, uh?
Yeah, no, I.
Okay, because.
My, my, I'm not, I'm not blindside you.
Here's the challenge with the Wi-Fi. No, no, no.
I was just going back through some old notes, and I saw that, and so that's, that's why I'm just raising it.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Yeah.
Um, but let me just say, one of the challenges with Wi-Fi goes back to a policy that we have about cell phones.
Yeah, trying to fix that, too.
Okay, so I'm just saying, so.
Yeah, we, we.
There, one is connected to the other. So we tell students aren't supposed to have a cellphone.
Yes.
And yet we want Wi-Fi on the buses, and not everybody has a tablet or iPad or laptop that they would be using on the bus. So just, yeah.
I feel you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm there with you on that one. Uh, any other questions, comments on, uh, where we are right now, and before we delve into the, an understanding of what this revenue sharing is about?
Well, just if we could, before the end of June, if you could let us know if you're going to be able to encumber?
Oh, yes, we will. As soon as we have a state budget, which we hope will be in the next day or so, next few days.
That's when you'll know.
We will know where we are, and whether or not we, we can, like I said, you see where we had, uh, some one-time equipment replacement, some things that we've included in terms of, that we could pre-fund, that would freed up space in the next budget. So that's what, what we'll do, and see if we can accomplish the GPS with that.
Yes, I'm coming back to CIP as well, by one of us to touch through this, because I think that touches on that as well. So, uh, if you're comfortable, you can kind of talk us through the?
Well, again, this is the actual copy of the resolution that went before council on the 22nd about the local revenue, um, allocation. And I mean, again, I, I know we're just providing this copy to you, but, and it certainly, uh, Ms. To can talk the, the very clear details, because you talk about being masterful with the scenarios. She used to come in the office, and we turn on the smart board in my office, and we start pulling up and running through all the scenarios, scenarios. So, excuse me, outstanding work. Um, the original goal of the revenue sharing proposal was to avoid the annual, and I'll use the comment of one of the public speakers at the public hearing, groveling of teachers and the, and the public schools asking for money every year. So the goal was to be able to, um, have a defined revenue source, that we would know annually what our base would be and potential growth. That's, that was the, that's the ultimate goal of a revenue sharing piece. The, the, there are mixed reviews in terms of, um, financial folks and economists and others as to whether or not this is a good move. Um, but, you know, we were charged with, with doing this, and we went forward, and that's why we did work with a consultant to help us think through, uh, making sure that, that we weren't just accepting of what was presented to us. So in that work, um, as I said, there was a team that included Ms. Ingram and Pearl To, um, Greg Patrick, Patrick, Greg?
Greg Patrick.
Greg Patrick from the city, um, sometimes Catherine Weitzel. I'm not sure who, who else. But, so they started meeting in earnest, probably December, December, January, and trying to, to look at options. When it was presented to us, the 28.5% was shown as a starting point. Uh, the 28.5% was really recognized what the current percentages were. And as I recall, in the joint meeting, questioning Mr. Jordan, a comment that he raises, well, if this hasn't been adequate, why are we using this as the base rather than some other things? We didn't necessarily get much movement on that. And, um, so the work focused around then which revenue streams would be included. Now, the interesting piece that has occurred, which we, you know, as, as, and, and again, I give Doug Smith a great credit for the meetings and the working relationship that we do have. Um, but it's interesting, in the economic forecast, you know, we've been hearing, uh, and listening to the city manager talk about, uh, revenue is not growing that quickly in the city, and what our needs are. We saw the article that came out post the city's adoption of the budget, and potential impacts on city, uh, projects, as well as school projects. Um, and then we also have seen, um, the reporting that's been done in local media, including some of the region's, um, highly-recognized economists, of what's going on with this region, and why this region is growing at a rate slower than Detroit. And that, you know, when you put Detroit and Norfolk in, or Hampton Roads in the same sentence, that's scary. And.
I'm going to push back a little.
Detroit now, in terms of its finances.
Dan Gilbert's financing Detroit. He's buying it.
I was gonna say, the, the, today's finances in, in Detroit, and, and the challenges that his experience. And so that's what gives me some angst with the revenue sharing model. It assumes 2% growth annually. And 2% growth based on the 122 million dollar basis, about 1.8 million dollars. So in my, my simple assessment of the math is, that's how much new money we would have from the city next year to build upon.
On top of the 5 million?
No, including, yeah, on top of the five.
Right.
So let's say next year's operating budget would be the five continued, the 122 plus 1.8. But 1.8 represents the growth.
Right.
The five nails the base.
Yeah.
So everything else.
The five goes to 122.
Right.
Builds upon it. And so, um, what concerns me are the statements around the challenges and economic growth within the city. But what is, what I'm also glad that we did is push harder on which revenue sources, which revenue streams became part of the final report that, uh, the city manager gave to the city. Because I think it, that's what pushed us to 29, and what was it, 29.?
55.
29.55, so almost a percentage more. And so I'll ask Pearl if she'll talk about some of the details, if you will, what you want to highlight in this resolution.
One was, the question was how the 29.55 was calculated. All right, the city is allocating 29.5% share of the 14 non-dedicated local tax revenues, and they're listed on the policy. So that 14 local revenues adds up to about 416,168,804. So when you take the 2019 funding of 122,971,922, divided over the 416, that equals 29.55.
And so you'll see on, like you said, on the, the second page of the policy, and the procedure to calculate, and it shows the sources of non-dedicated local tax revenue. And this is where we've been, where we were able to push and add some, some other sources. Am I correct, Ms. Pearl?
Mm-hmm. It's on page.
It's the second page of the policy, and it's the second page from the back of the third page, excuse me, from the, yeah.
Where did the 400,000 come from?
Uh, that was emailed to me, because I asked for what is the total of this 14 revenue for 2019 to come up with a 29.55%.
And what was the figure again?
416 million.
Say it again.
168,804.
And that's what is sources of non-dedicated local tax revenue?
14, yes, ma'am.
For those 14 categories?
Hmm.
CIP into...
The city is going to do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And say it again, and you divided that by?
Divide the 122,971,922, that's the funding for 2019 from the city, divide that from the 416, equals 29.55%.
Okay.
They're going to actually do three revenue estimate. They're going to start in September. They're going to provide the estimate of the local contribution for 2020. And then, they're going to do another one mid-year. In February, the city will update that estimate. And in March, they're going to provide the final estimate, and that, that's the one that's going to be included in the city's proposed budget.
And right now, that's based on 2% growth that they anticipate in the city, that would allow that to, that goal to be met.
Okay, so then if their growth is less than that, then what is?
Well, and see, that's that piece about the mid-year revenue shortfall and adjustments, and it's where I continue to say, schools aren't like...
Any other division in the city.
Right, right. We're not like a department of the city. And we can't eliminate classes in the middle of a year. We can certainly monitor what our spending costs are, and I think you all have seen us do, do... When, when Ms. Ingram and I have talked, we both realized, I said, we're extremely conservative when it comes to budgeting. But we laughed recently and said, we think we, we, sometimes we might be just straight-out cheap. We're beyond frugal in some of the ways in which we address budgeting, but to make sure that we have what we need for the instructional process. And so, that's, fortunately, we have that mindset. And so, we would be able to see, you know, do we need to scale back on some spending? You know, what are some things that we would maybe need to do in order to be successful? But remember, this would be money for the following year, so that it wouldn't impact the current... So FY19, when they do the mid-year review, ours funds already set. This would be planning for the allocation for FY20, as an example. And so, that means we could meet the 1.8 or not. Now, when it says in March, part of that data is where we've pushed and said, I have to give a bu- budget to the board early March. End of February, it'll be great if maybe we can push it to end of February, because we know some of the projections. But we have to have a budget before city council by April 1st. So, that March information is critical for us to be able to make sure that we're sending a budget over that's balanced in terms of what we know the revenue will be. Now, I think the sticky wiki is one of those, you know, you hear me talk about Hyffet's and Linsky's technical and adaptive challenges around leadership. The technical challenge is all this information here. The adaptive challenge becomes when the district has said, these are our needs, but this is all we're going to get, then do we send something to the city that doesn't meet what we already knew we were going to get? And so, I think that's going to require some conversations, as we do budget conversations all year long, and not just in March and April and May, that we begin to think about what will be our strategy around this. And I don't have one to offer today. I mean, my team and I haven't had that conversation quite yet. I think we each probably have some thoughts. But as we, we think about, you know, what's the impact? Because the city's ultimate goal is not to have, I'm looking at my buddy over there, remind them of what their obligations are to education, so...
Reverend Haywood?
Ms. Toh, I would like to understand how the non-dedicated tax revenue works. With the real estate tax, can, if the city raises the real estate taxes again, we automatically get the increase in that?
That's correct.
Would that be correct?
Two point seven cents. Included in the policy, actually, is a through-up provision, that if at the end of the year, there's excess revenue based on the change in the real estate, they're going to give us the 29.55% of that excess.
When they raise that again in the future, that would be true as well. Can they?
Whoa, 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 pause for a minute. I don't think you all are saying the same thing.
Yeah.
I just make sure I'm following. What I hear Reverend Haywood asking is, so right now, we know that the city just did a increase of 10 cents. In that increase of 10 cents, 2.7 cents came to North Public Schools, 7.3, 7.3 cents went elsewhere, went to other city initiatives. What I hear you asking is, let's say, next year, for whatever reason, the city decided they wanted to change the rate to 1.26 cents. Are you, are you asking that somehow automatically by that increase, that the school system is automatically going to receive?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and that's, that's what Ms. Toh said. In that true-up provision, in the event that the fiscal year, that those actual non-dedicated tax revenues exceed projections, we would get 29.55% of the excess.
Correct. We, we receive 29.55% of the pie.
Of these 14.
Of that pie.
These aren't all revenue streams for the city.
Correct.
And you will see that there are some notes. There are some dedicated local taxes that are included. It doesn't include the delinquent tax revenue, we tried, as for the real estate and the, and the personal property tax. So, there are some things that are backed out of those two. It's in the notes right on that same page. But yes, 29.55% of growth beyond the, what they have modeled in saying the projections would be in September, mid-year, and end of year.
Of the pie.
Of the pie.
Right.
Of the 14.
I'm sorry.
Which is why it was so critically important for us to stay at the table, as we did, around what became. Now, 30-plus percent was better for us, but again, we, we did get 1% movement on that. But we, we spent a lot of time navigating which revenue streams would be in here.
Reverend Haywood, you finished? Ms. Basina, then Dr. Robinson?
So, I appreciate the time and effort that, that went into this, and I appreciate the explanation of how that 29.55 was determined. But going back to the discussion we had when we originally had the revenue sharing formula, about what is it we aim to be as a school division? You know, that joint vision with the city, that 29.55 based on, you know, is still based on a base that may not give us the pie in the sky, you know, where we're meeting the needs of every student. So, I still have issue with this 29.55. It's a step in the right direction, but let's say for fiscal year 2022, you know, we come back and we, what, where do we get to come back and say, we need to rethink this? We need to come work together to have that strong vision of our, for our school division.
I, I think you're exactly right, that this formula is silent on what's the city's collective vision for its schools.
Yeah.
That, that, that is not a driver of what's here.
Right.
This is really about...
Right, and this is what...
The annual ask, and, and, and what that looks like. And so, I, to the larger piece of what you're asking, I think that's work that yet remains.
Okay, so this is something that we can come back, you know, let's say, next year, we know, based on the program review, you know, we look at our program effectiveness, are we meeting our, you know, the needs of our special ed students? Do we need more behavioral specialists? We're exceeding this, you know, what will be, you know, this over 5 million. We need to come back, and we need to be bold and ask for what we need, which we've, you know, we've, we're setting, rebalancing our budget these last couple of years. But now, moving forward, as we work with the city to come up with this revenue sharing formula, I think we need to be bold in our ask and be unified as a city about what it really means to have a strong school division, and not being, you know, frugal. I mean, when I'm putting that with educating our children in the same sentence, that scares me. So, I, you know, I, I just, I don't know, I'm disappointed with this process.
The last two pages attempt to address that. There is a provision, so there's a process to revise the local revenue allocation policy. So, we shall meet annually to discuss changes in state and federal revenue forecasts and everything made. And so, if to determine if an adjustment is needed, we can brief our collective boards and bodies.
There's, there's also provision in the policy request to increase local contribution?
Right, that's, that's the last page. So, the first piece was, how do we review these? And we have committed to some assumptions of annual discussions and reviews, as it says, about state and, and federal revenue and what that looks like. The last page gets to, to what you're saying.
Yeah, and I'll just end with this. As you said earlier, it was our understanding that we were going to collectively come to this determination together, this, what the revenue sharing formula will be. And I just, you know, I think it's clear that it was not determined that way, but, you know, with the board's input and...
Staff input was there.
Consultation, staff input was there.
It came to the, to the board, it came to us at the same time it was going to council, so...
Right.
I have some thoughts I'll share at the end, so...
And, you know, it's interesting, the fourth bullet under the procedure says the school board supports all these things that what the school board would have to do in order to, the resolution should include additional funding is required, the amount of funding, the purpose for additional funding, and that the school board supports an increase in real estate tax rate or other tax rate to support the additional requests. I do have a problem if the only way we see about raising revenue is about taxing folks.
Yeah.
And so, especially, again, I recognize that the city is reducing positions this year, but we've reduced, and reduced probably close, this is my third budget. This year, I had 15 positions in it, last year, you know, 70-something, we've reduced almost 100 positions in the three budgets I presented. So, it's not that we've gotten more without making our own internal adjustments. There's also this belief and mindset that as we take buildings offline, we create immediate savings. We create some savings, but technically, those, some of those are one-time savings. The other piece, the other unknown for us, and I will have to go back and review this final document, but that's silent on, is that even the state gives you some whole, hell harmless provisions as it relates to declining enrollment, sometimes, depending on the percentage. The city has plans moving forward that could have significant impact on our enrollment, particularly the St. Paul's quadrant work. Because if all of those families don't stay in the city that have children, we could see significant hits on our enrollment. We already know that, again, and hopefully, I should have sent it to everybody, sent it to the senior team, but there was an article recently that came out on CNN, that nationally, the birth rates are down now. And they say, why aren't folks having? So, we've been saying this for a couple of years. Nobody wanted to believe us.
Right.
But I also learned a long time ago, how I say, no one's a prophet in their own land. And so, you know, despite Tracy and, and the work that's been going on in Dr. Bailey's office with Dennis Foody and others, we've been saying that it wasn't that folks were leaving Norfolk Public Schools, we have fewer folks coming in. And, you know, in some of our educational planning recommendations, we said things were a year out, because we had to get an enrollment bubble through a point. And so, um, with or without a, a revenue sharing formula, there's still a lot of discussion, I think, on the table as it relates to what the goals are.
That's why I think those quarterly meetings are very important, or the frequent conversations with the city.
Ms. Basina, you finished?
I'm finished.
I'm just smiling, Ms. Doerr, you may be the only one there, but we appreciate it. You know, our, our other conversations...
Oh, y'all are hurting me. Dr. Robinson?
It may be the one-time savings from closing buildings and, and adjusting our, our facilities plan. That's why this, that facilities plan is so important, but it is, it's a, it's a, a symbol of, of this division's commitment to utilizing the tax dollars effectively and efficiently. And unfortunately, we're in a frugal time. The city's credit card, they'll tell you, the credit card's full. Their, their debt service is so high right now, and there's nothing they can do about it, other than tightening their belt. And we have to be prepared to, to, to do that. And, and I think we've been very fortunate from the city in the last few budget cycles, that we were able to, to advance as much as we can. But there is, the conversations I've had with my friends on the other side of the street there, they, they tell me, they say, where, where are you going to take the money from? You're going to, how many firemen, how many policemen are you going to stop? You know, which recreational centers are you going to close? Everybody, you know, everybody wants their piece of the pie. And right now, Norfolk Public Schools takes the biggest piece of the pie. And we have to show that we are willing to, to shoulder that burden and, and make do with what we have while we recover from this. And the reason we recover, we got hit by a sequestration and the Great Recession at the same time. That's why we lag behind every other major city in the, in the country, is because of that. And hopefully, some of the steps that are coming in, that, that's going to, that's going to change, and people will start moving back to Norfolk. I have my suggestion, start having more babies, and start having, uh, uh, build a house in Norfolk, and open up a business, and eat dinner here a lot.
Well, I bought the house. Having the babies is done.
Me too, me too.
Oh, no more babies.
My, uh, my sister-in-law just had one, so...
I was going to say, you guys are trying to do it on your own. We appreciate it.
There's 12 of us now, so...
So, Dr. Robinson? So, so a couple of things, because I'm trying not, I want to be upbeat about the, the conversation, and, I mean, I'm, I'm not feeling it. But I think we should feel it. You know, Dr. Robinson mentioned at our, one of our last meetings about, you know, we were talking about the, uh, the mixed income pre-K, and the, the transportation alignment, and all these master milestones that we've talked about for the last, at least five years. If you go back and look at the master milestone list, we have hit just about every single one. So, methodically, systematically, we are, uh, I think, doing great things. I think we have, um, you know, we have a systems thinking superintendent who has been working with a systems thinking board. You know, when we, when Dr. Boone was over at council, and, and I joined her there, and some questions came up about making tough decisions, I think we have made some very tough decisions in initiatives from those things that we've heard from the community, such as hearing from teachers for years about the impact of the, you know, compression of the pay scale and steps. I mean, to me, that was a big deal. We've talked about restorative justice and alternative education initiatives. We have that ongoing and underway. You know, while I have some thoughts that I want to put forward in terms of this revenue sharing, the conversation about even trying to get to a revenue sharing formula has been out there for two decades. So, the fact that we got here, I think, is something we should applaud, but it's always a work in progress. And, and Ms. Basina, you know, as part of our role as a school board, it's our job to advocate and to push and communicate and collaborate and do the things that are necessary to continue to make sure that the children and staff and everybody that serves Norfolk Public Schools is, um, is, is taken care of. We've talked a lot about specialty programs and choice programs, and looking at school consolidation. So, there are many things that I feel the board has accomplished, the superintendent has accomplished, and for a division that goes to the state and says to the legislature and to the VDOE and to the state board how important it is to recognize and reward growth, I think we too have to model that and acknowledge that there has been, uh, uh, some great growth, and, and we're going to continue that, that growth. So, uh, there's a lot to be done. It's a lot that we could continue to ask for, but as we had in some... we had in some of our goals, if we don't celebrate the successes that we have along the way, then, you know, we can unintentionally demoralize everybody as well. So I think we have to do, this is just my opinion, do a much better job of celebrating the success that we are having, the fact that there are conversations around lifelong learning and what's the meaning of education to the city, whereas two, three years ago, I don't know if we were having those conversations, at least not at the depth that we're, that we're having now. As for the revenue sharing piece, just like we deal with policies every day and we review policies and we make recommendations, I would suggest that, and that we do it now and maybe have some recommendations come forward for our last business meeting of the year, that we respond back. If we have some concerns about bullet number four, then we make a recommendation to city council to look at bullet number four. I had a concern about the manner in which it described the city manager, school superintendents, director of budget, and chief financial officers shall meet annually to discuss changes in state and federal revenues on and on. Going back to Mrs. Doyle's point, I think it should be something in this resolution that speaks to the policy, the governing bodies meeting and having some impact and influence on that and not putting all the burden on the administrators once a year to come back and try to address that. We should be driving that from a, from a governing piece. So yes, the city adopted this, it's a great document. I think it begins to put us towards a base, but it's, you know, it's legislative policy work. So we can go through, we can look at it, if there's some recommendations that we want to make, and I think we should make them soon, like in the next thirty days, don't let it go off, that we put that on the table now. And just as we amend resolutions and policies, they can, you all in the future, can also consider making amendments. I think we have to be willing to lead that effort if we feel that there are things in here that restrain or constrain our efforts. And to the mayor's credit, you know, at the meeting that Dr. Boone and I attended with the city council and others, I mean, he acknowledged and he was trying to say to his colleagues, look, this revenue funding formula just gives us some predictability in the system.
Right.
But there's always going to be this give and take and ebb and flow, and anyone who thinks that is not, they're just fooling themselves. So I think there's some educating that we have to continue to do amongst our own team and staff as well as with the public. But I think that, at least I feel, we've made some important steps over the last few years in terms of bringing more resources to the division that align with our strategic work, that make us more competitive. And, you know, the first lap, you may pace yourself, but the second lap, you begin to, begin to make your moves. So I just think we're in a position now where we can make some moves because we know we have some stability and some infrastructure behind us to do it. So that's just kind of my take on it and.
Well, if I can just say, I agree with you wholeheartedly in terms of how, what we do have to celebrate. And that's why in the beginning I said, one of the things that concerns me is the pay-to-play model that the state is putting in, because they're putting localities who have stepped up through all of this and kept school districts operating and whole and moving forward, that they, you know, they are putting more back on the localities and they're shirking their responsibilities too, so.
Yeah, and fortunately, unfortunately, we're not the only division or the only city in that position, so we know we have others that.
Strength in numbers.
Strength in numbers, absolutely. So let's touch on the CIP and then see if we can drive towards the will of the board on this.
The CIP portion of the budget references six million dollars in the operating portion one time for deferred maintenance projects. So that would allow, and quite had been the two million, two or three million dollar line item. So that, that additional money is included in the operating budget.
For this fiscal year.
For this fiscal year only, and then it reverts to the two or three million dollars that it has been. So that bump is one time. That's a one-time bump.
The six million, I thought, is in the CIP fund.
You have to speak.
It's in the, right, it's in the, the capital funds, it's in the operating budget.
Okay.
The other money I'm going to talk about in a minute is like a capital CIP reserve. That's, that's other money, but the six million is in, is in the operating, but it's one time and will revert, as we said, to, back to, I believe it's the three million or the two million?
Two million.
Two million, which is, you know, we had asked for, I mean, the study says we need sixteen annually. And so there, there's other capital dollars that, you know, the city, city manager proposed that in my term, not his, a construction lockbox, a capital lockbox, would be a fifteen million dollar deposit in the next fiscal year that comes from the SWIFT project, the sale of Lambert's Point Golf Course and that new SWIFT program. And then the second fifteen related to that would come in either the end of the next fiscal year, the beginning of the following. So that's pretty much thirty million in a lockbox for construction. Did I capture everything, girl, that's capital? Is one more capital pot?
There's a million dollar for buses in the CIP.
Right, the annual million dollar capital for budget, for buses remains. And you recall last school year and last fiscal year, the city allowed us to advance the million for this year because we had an opportunity to apply for that EPA grant. And so we were able to get two additional buses because of that grant, so.
I'm sorry, did you say they are doing the buses again this year as well?
Yes, the one million for buses remains there. And bus costs are going up.
Dr. Boone, I just want to share Greg's Patrick email, text. He said the capital reverts to three million instead of two.
Thank you. Tell him I said thank you for watching and listening.
Also, he said that any increase in, tax increase, we get twenty-nine point five, five percent unless the council dedicates the increase for something else.
Right, right.
So we know they watch us.
One of the things we, that often gets lost in it is while we talk about the twenty-nine point five-five that we receive, you know, you still can compare it to other localities and see how we are, how we're doing there and, you know, we tend to lag, but we, we have to push.
Like you said, at least we have somewhere to start from. And I'm glad that we were able to stay at the table to really push on what were going to be the revenue source or so.
And at what point will you share with the board what you're going to do with the six million capital based on the priorities on the table?
Some of that, probably by the twenty-first, twenty, what's the next meeting?
Twentieth of June.
The twentieth, thank you. I got to check and see if we have that ready, because we, we, you know, are closing out some, some capital progress, projects, and so some of that money we're using now.
Yeah.
To do some things. And so we're closing that out, but we have a partial list complete.
Okay.
But we'll.
Yeah, I think that would be great if we could see that.
At the last business meeting.
Okay.
At least an update on it. Okay, any other questions, thoughts on recommendations regarding the eighteen, nineteen budget that we've received from the administration? Questions? Well, is there a, what's the will of the board, is there a?
Can we, do we need to vote on like the four budgets in the whole?
Right, that's what I'm going to say, do you have the list of the, all the four totals?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, the school nutrition.
First payment. Oh, the child nutrition and the grants, the city has not appropriated that yet. They will appropriate that in June.
Right, so today what we were going to do.
Today we're just doing operating?
The operating.
Correct.
And then we come back with the final ones, if not June sixth, and definitely by the business meeting.
Whenever the city council appropriates the child nutrition and grants.
Then wasn't there a fourth one? Weren't there four?
The total.
The CIP.
The CIP.
The CIP, they did that on May twenty-second.
All right, so we can vote on two today.
What's the, what's the second?
Operating CIP.
And CIP.
So what's the total? I know what the, what would be the total for the?
The operating fund is three hundred twenty-eight million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred fifty.
It's the total, it's on the.
Right, I got that, but what would be the, the CIP that you're?
CIP, I do not have that with me.
Because isn't that, wouldn't we act on that once we get the part of the information you just asked about?
Yeah, could we, let's do, what's critical for us today is the operating budget, so HR can begin to push out contracts.
Okay.
If we can do operating and we'll cycle back when we have timelines, when we expect the city to approve grants and child nutrition, as well as where we are with the, the mapping out of what the six million dollars will be used for.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve the operating budget as, has been recommended by the administration?
And that total is the amount on that page, three hundred twenty-eight million.
I make a motion that we approve the operating budget presented by the administration.
Second?
Second. Moved by Dr. Robinson, seconded by Mrs. Doyle. Any further discussion? So just for clarity, above you on the screen, you have the column, yes, to your far right that has the three-two-eight-three-five-five-nine-five-zero. That is the amount that we are voting on per the operating budget. Any further discussion or questions regarding the motion and the recommendation? All right, hearing none, Mr. Butts, if you would call the roll, please. Ms. Bassine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Okay, so then for clarity, we will be coming back maybe as early as June sixth, but no later than June twentieth with the other resolutions that we need to also vote upon.
And hopefully, if the state has adopted a budget by then, we can also amend the operating budget by any state action, and so we could also do that by June twentieth.
All right, that is it for this session. Anything anybody else has as far as the budget is concerned or the last hour or so conversation and years worth of work that we've had, Ms. Toe?
Well, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of another budget staff.
Please do.
Ms. Edna Felton here. She works very closely with the school principals in helping them with their budget, so.
All right, and yes, Dr. Boone, on that, in that vein, we, we know that this is not something that just started three months ago, that it's been something that's been going on all year. And so not only thank you to your staff for all the hard work, but thank you to the board. I mean, we've battled it out some and we're still talking to each other, at least for today. So it's all good and we'll, we'll continue to work over the next remaining part of, of the year. One, one quick, just matter of the board. So Reverend Haywood, you know, on, we've been doing our musical setting the tone efforts. So at our, at our business meeting, you know, at one point we were going to ask you if you would be willing to open us up, so I'd like for you to consider opening us up at our business meeting, so. On June twentieth.
What do you define opening?
We will talk about that. We'll, we'll talk about whether or not you just play scales or whether or not you.
Ed Haywood showcase.
Yes, exactly. So you've talked about it quite a bit and be so appreciative if you would consider.
I didn't talk about me playing, I was talking about our wonderful musicians playing.
Yeah.
Well, I have to tell you that we, we heard the choir over at that Granby sing, just outstanding, well-trained choir there. Did a great job at the, the awards ceremony for the IB program, yeah.
All right, so we're going to adjourn and, oh, need to do a motion for us to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session.
All right, second. Moved by Ms. Doyle, seconded by Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Butts, if you would read that motion, please.
Move that the members of the school board, the superintendent and council go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools. The substance of this section of the motion concerns the evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The substance of this section of the motion refers to the consultation and briefing regarding the matter set out in subsection A and the school board's legal relation with the Norfolk Education Foundation.
Ms. Bassine?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
All right, so I've got five-twenty-seven, if we can convene by five-thirty-two, we can get this knocked out.